I play the ladies.
You do.
I.
I know the state is in America.
You do.
But like what was the stance?
What?
I should.
I don't figure that out.
And it's all with liberty and justice.
So.
I mean, the thing to your quick approval of minutes on the July seventh meeting from the following meeting. I'll make the motion for this. Second motion, all in favor. I repeat. Approval of claims. You get an option real soon.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I'll still go ahead and make my comment that I've made at previous meetings. Uh, I, I'm not going to support the, uh, approval of the, uh, the boat lobbyists. Seven months in. And we're spending fifteen thousand dollars a quarter. And I've seen the person. So just no debt for future. I'll make a motion to approve the claims that stands tonight. I'll say it all in favor. Uh, Dusty, we're gonna one quick change.
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't on the agenda. Hold this up maybe. We have folks in four H here. If you want to come up, you can come up now, but there's a so me, yeah, so you guys can get home.
Appreciate that. Once again, I'm Josh Archer. I'm the Switzerland County Fair Board President. Uh, we were here last month, met with you all, and, uh, you generously approved a twenty-five thousand dollar grant opportunity. Uh, we went and sat with counsel a week ago. Uh, they denied the grant, uh, pending they weren't giving any money out in July. We were told to wait till August, uh, but they, they did do a donation of twenty-five thousand out of another source of income. So we resubmitted for the next quarter grant funding. Uh, we basically, we took two of our proposals off. We had four projects to begin with on our initial form. So we had two projects we're asking for funding for. Uh, the first one being a HVAC system for the only building that we actually have HVAC heating air in on the fairgrounds. Uh, we were at, we got two, uh, quotes on that. They were both close to around forty thousand dollars each. So we, that was one project, our, our top project, and then a second project, which, uh, it goes back to some, a project we started last year, which we didn't receive enough funding from the community foundation for, to cover additional fans in our show and livestock arena, as well as the holding area where the kids basically house their animals or projects prior to entering the arena. Uh, so we're asking for six thousand dollars there. So for a total of the two projects for forty-six thousand dollars. So.
Uh, and I have no problem with it. You, you know, my support for, for the four H. You know, one thing that you need to note, uh, about three or four months ago, there was a fund that was discussed that had been there since two thousand ten that had a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in. And I don't remember anyone saying where that money was going to be shuffled to. Here, what I was saying is about three or four meetings ago, months ago, there was a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars that was discovered in a fund that had been sitting there since about two thousand ten. And, and I don't know what we can do to that money. Uh, it, it just, I just want to claim the seat so, so you'll, you'll remember.
Yeah.
Uh, but we have that money sitting there someplace because there was a fund at the last council meeting, Lance. What, what was that fund? Well, you weren't here. You were on vacation. Fund that you all.
The fund that they probably gave us our twenty-five thousand dollar donation out of.
Yeah. That's a point of flag. So that was funded from the community foundation.
Right.
So that had to be used for specific purposes. This fellow.
Yeah.
Do, do you know Lance, what they, what we've done with the hundred and forty-six?
I think it's still sitting there. That might have been the one that was, this call Randy Day on.
Yeah.
And, and it was untouched. It's been untouched, like I said, for like fifteen years.
And that's where, okay, the ready day fund, we're gonna need an ordinance to authorize, which just needs to be adopted by council.
That's the same one you're talking about.
Yeah, if it's the same one, we just need an, an ordinance to authorize us to use the ready day fund. Uh, but then we can use that, uh, not.
Could it ever be used, possibly to be used for something like this?
The four H group. It could possibly, I just want to make sure that they, the funds didn't come from someplace that has a restricted use on them. But as long as there's nothing like that, and we have the appropriate ordinance adopted by council, then that could be an avenue.
Sorry to go sideways.
Oh, you're fine. So we're basically just here to ask to, for our grant proposal to be submitted for maybe possibly August funding releasing for upcoming grants.
You didn't get any money from.
We didn't get anything through this grant. They all came from that community foundation. So they basically turned the first one down, basically, and said, we'll give you this instead. So we accepted graciously and we're back to continue with our project. So.
I'll second, all in favor. Let me ask you one thing.
Okay.
Thought we've done that part. Contract.
Yep.
For four H.
Yep.
Thank you. When I discussed that.
Yep.
Only one that has, that you all control the grounds three hundred and sixty-five days.
Yep, right. Currently, we're controlled the grounds three hundred and sixty-five days. We have to cover all utilities, insurance on the property. Everything that involves maintaining an upkeep.
Probably soon, we may want to sit down together and.
I'd welcome that.
Better way for four H to, to, you know, surrounding for half or buildings and things that you can do for three weeks a year.
I appreciate that. So we'll sit down and have a meeting sometime.
Or in someone, things calm down.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Fred, right? Get it here on deck. The first thing I got is back in January when we made the, when you all made Ryan president, we forgot to do the end up agreement to the documents, just the contracts.
Okay, so what this is, an ordinance grants me the authority for contracts through the Indiana Department of Transportation. So in accordance with Switzerland County ordinance twelve dash twenty dash twenty twenty-one, President of Switzerland County Commissioner Ryan Harrison is hereby authorized and confirmed to have the authority to execute any end dot agreements and all documents related to any end dot grant programs for and on behalf of and to bind the county of Switzerland, Indiana. The Board of Commissioners in the County of Switzerland, County, Indiana hereby ratifies all prior agreements and associated documents executed by the President of the Commissioners for the County of Switzerland, Indiana, for the term beginning January one, twenty twenty-five, until which time a new president is selected.
And, and just to clarify, so that's not a new ordinance. That is just a document that, uh, the Highway Department came up with. I looked at it just now. It, it's, it's okay. The ordinance just says that we have to have something in writing that, that we could point to and say, you have that authority. And that's what that document is. Yeah, exactly. That's all it.
Set the ordinance, uh, twelve dash twenty dash twenty-one. I'll second the ordinance, all in favor. Now, this Wednesday night at the special meeting with commissioners and council, we will read this part of the minutes and vote to approve that minute, just that, so that he can get this submitted in time to not lose the grant. We'll take advantage of that special meeting. Allow us. Dusty.
Okay, so truck eighteen repaired, it's completed, picked up from mainland diesel. Uh, truck nineteen went big rig for transmission issues, and we do have both trucks back now. Uh, most road signs is during vegetation control, patching potholes, cleaning culverts, cutting trees tight. Uh, they burned the Turner Road, Evans Hill Road in Little Hump. Replaced stop signs on Aaron Road, State Route two, State Route two fifty. Put new road signs up on Long Run, Forkish Grove, and Gervis Ridge. Replaced the damaged culvert on Jackson Road for crappy equipment, chip and seal work. Uh, they installed culverts on Ross Ford. And, uh, the town of V V won, I guess, borrow some of our millings for the decent work at the.
Yeah, I think Karen called you. So Jeremy Carson reached out. They have a road project. If I'm not wrong.
Yeah.
It's not going to be completed prior to the wine festival, so they won't have millings available to them. We have to use our millings because they have two egress roads down by the boat launch there, park that have to be up to par before they can have an event. So I told him I didn't think that'd be a problem. Uh, I don't have any problem giving them our millings at that time if they can replace them after their project is complete. So, yeah, just give them the millings.
So I'll be with him and move forward on that. Uh, we didn't receive our money from the insurance claim on Evans Hill from semi damage, so hopefully we'll get started by March or early. And we're gonna order paint maybe here in a week or two for our line stragglers. As soon as we get down to Chip and Sue, we'll start striking.
Assuming, you know, Marlin.
Yeah, all our main roads first, and then we'll start branching out after that.
Then how close are we to getting the, uh, two trucks that, that we were?
Uh, I talked to Ettinger, uh, week before last, I think, and he said they're still not started on the bodies yet. So the trucks are done. They're waiting for the dump beds and piles and all that. He said we should see him before snow flies.
Hopefully, we don't have any snowfall. So we're, speaking of that, send her.
There's about a holiday yet. We're still waiting on the road. Yeah. Uh, and the next thing I got on the list, so last year, the commissioners voted to take care of Turner Road back over, and the fifteenth of this month was our year of wait period. So is Rob here tonight? Stockmar?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I guess ask Garrett how we go on this next part. We didn't touch that side over.
This, we're just abiding by our ordinance, right?
Yep.
And the ordinance says that we had, they had to be, um, bring up zip code for a year.
Yep, for a year. They got main damage for a year. It has to have a fifty-foot rideaway. Uh, so it's gotta be, I think, ten, total of ten inches of rocks. We got like TRB, the fifty-three base, and then four inches of seven trees on top of that.
Can we check that? No. The, the only thing that, uh, from a just a liability standpoint, best practices, I don't think it says it in our ordinance at this time, but I think we should add it in. If we just take this new road only off of this one petition alone, without having somebody come in and say, no, all these folks signed off, which I thought he said he had, right?
Well, that's, yeah, that's why I was asking if he was here.
That's my concern. I want to have some document that everyone has signed off, or else then they could come back and say, no, you took our road by eminent domain. So then we have this. So I think we should add that in as a requirement to either obtain those, uh, signatures from folks, or we could go and do that, but so from today's standpoint, I would wait till he comes in and shows that he has everyone sign off or appropriately notice everybody that, hey, we're about to take this, uh, put a right away back there.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while, so I don't want to take anybody's stuff with.
Yeah.
So we'll table that.
Okay.
Can you reach out to him now?
I will.
Do your duty.
Yeah.
Bring that back to him before we do that.
And I think we should change the ordinance.
Yeah. So I'll reach out to him. I'll bring the ordinance. We can change that. Okay, so. Finished this Carol Turner. Uh, we got Tim Hensley on here for Red Hog Pike. You'll move that.
Yeah. Yeah, Tim.
Yeah. There are you.
Uh, my name's Tim Hensley. Uh, pretty much a lifelong resident of Switzerland County on Red Hog Pike. Uh, my family moved there in seventy-two, and I've pretty much been there the whole time. Uh, and I'm sure you guys are all aware of, uh, the county roads, the traffic, the speeding. Um, I'm tired of it. I played vigilante the other day and went after somebody and tracked them all the way to their residence. Um, nothing happened, but, uh, I don't know when the forty-five miles an hour signs got posted on Red Hog Pike. I mean, I, I remember when there was no speed limit posting, and I found out somebody said a non-posted speed, uh, county road is forty-five in Switzerland County, unless it's posted otherwise. Um, I would like to see what can be done about getting the speed limit posted down to thirty or thirty-five because then they're gonna drive forty-five. Posted at forty-five, they're driving fifty-five, fifty, fifty-five. Last November, last November, R E M C had just replaced, R E M C had just replaced one of the wooden utility poles with the steel pole. The car was going so fast, the steel pole sheared off at ground level. The police that showed up there, the sheriff, you know, nobody was there to clock their speed. The girl was okay. Um, he says she had to be going sixty to hit a steel pole like that and shear it off. Um, we've had several chickens get hit and killed and ducks and cats and dogs. And I know animals aren't supposed to be in the road, but, you know, we do live in the country. And, uh, like I told the individual when I confronted them, you know, a little bit of respect for people that live in the country, you know, you're gonna have cattle, you're gonna have horses, you're gonna have Amish, you know, you're gonna have different things. And I didn't just, you know, without going on and on and on, I just didn't know if anything can be done to get the posted speed. Not that that's gonna slow them down, but to keep my wife from ordering off Amazon all these goofy reflective duck crossing signs and all this stuff, so it'll save me a lot of money in the long run.
So like I told you on the following week, we look, and, uh, so Dusty and I talked for the meeting. You on the, the agenda, Dusty's gonna speak to Mr. Bascom, legal counsel. And I don't know your availability, sir, but if you're able to come back here two weeks from today to our next commissioner meeting, we'll have that answer for you.
Okay.
If there's legal things, we have to look.
Okay.
There's some speculation whether we can lower it any further than forty-five in our county road. We don't know that answer.
Yeah.
We can't do that until tonight's meeting.
Yeah, I know I did talk to somebody last year, and they said something about it had to go through the state, and it had to go through, uh, not a survey, but, uh,
A road study.
A road study.
Yeah.
Traffic study.
We made this previous, and why is that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Turns into a petition matter.
Yeah.
They, it'll work out.
Yeah, you, you come off a Red Hog Pike at forty-five by the elementary school, and you go to forty on a state highway. So.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah. Okay.
But two people.
You said, uh.
Will have either good news or three or bad news.
Okay, is that, do you have the date that that will be on?
That's August fourth. Same time, five P M.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And so if you guys listen to, the, I need to look at the contract that we have with U S I, but generally when you're reducing a speed study or when you're reducing the speed limit or increasing it, you just need a speed study done first. So I don't know if our contract requires prior approval for them to start that process, but if you guys want to do that, you can authorize them to start, uh, the speed study. So we at least can have that to know if we're gonna need to do it or not. Yeah, I don't have the contract in front of me, but if you want to at least start that process, because the speed study is gonna take a little bit.
Yeah.
I'd allow at least a month.
What is, do we, do we know an extra request of the cost of that?
That's the thing. If you want to see what the it should say.
They're usually around twenty-five hundred to four thousand. I don't know.
And I don't know what, if you thin your contract or if it's extra, so if you want to have Derek come and explain that at the next meeting, will you do that? Or if you just want to do.
Probably should have been, it's gonna cost money.
Yeah.
Now, I have been looking at Elka. To do our own speed studies, but we're not there yet.
We probably have to reach out to him at income.
Yeah. But I'll get over there.
I don't want to go wrong much money that we don't know in our contract.
Yeah, because it may be included in the contract, or it may be extra, so that's what I hope.
Yeah, let's just have him. Be here next time. We'll find out what that looks like for us.
So be here on the fourth. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Heather. Okay, well, I can tell you now, it's next on the agenda, it's a water heater issue out of animal control. Um, I wasn't here two weeks ago to explain what she needs, and she's not here tonight, so I'm gonna table this, you know, must do. So we're gonna table that, because I'm not gonna vote and pay for something that either. I'm gonna table it again. The next on the list is the Coroner's Dodge Durango. It was not here either. Two weeks ago, we found out the Coroner's vehicle broke down, uh, wiring issue. Gave them an extra ambulance that we were gonna send to auction instead of just sitting Corners currently driving that ambulance. It seems to be working fine right now. Don't know what this Durango was gonna cost or if it even looked at, so we'll table that again. And Karen.
Hey, thanks for having me. Um, as you know, I have a position vacant in my office. And according to the handbook, I need to have your approval to backfill that position.
I make a motion to approve that. All in favor?
Thank you. And I just need you to sign it, and then I'll need a copy. Yeah, I'll just give you, get a copy back in my office. Another one if you need it.
You've had seven, several applications.
Yes, I have.
Good.
So I've got the position applications open until the first. If I don't feel I have enough applicants, I'll keep it open a little bit longer. But at this point, we'll see in a couple of weeks, so.
Next on the agenda is the Everbridge contract. We don't have B M A here. Just say when that contract, when we active. Everbridge is the communication that, that's a mass, uh, mass messaging system for any emergencies, Switzerland County, go off phone and text message. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think it was only several hundred people that ever signed up to use that program.
It says it starts, and this one is starting in twenty-six, going to twenty-seven. February first, twenty-six to January thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven.
So we're not under an obligation to get it done tonight?
No, and I would prefer, uh, just to have somebody explain a little bit more about it. We'll, uh, table that.
Me, Tom. Yeah. Make sure Tom at the next meeting, so he can explain this contract a little bit better. Again, I don't, I don't know that it's worth that money. Maybe it is. And budget contract, which regarding Baker Tilly. We've already assigned, we already signed that contract, I guess, last, I'm looking at Lance. Um, so I guess our part's done.
Yeah, so if we're gonna go with Baker Tilly, the contract's already been signed, uh, council appropriated money under, um, the other, there are two separate Baker Tilly agreements that were approved at, uh, two, like last month sometime. Uh, council appropriated money for one of those, but not the budget. Um, so if we want to go with Baker Tilly, then we just need to have money appropriated for that.
So I guess we'd already signed this, so it's a matter whether we go appropriate, develop them. Go back to going. Is that right?
Yeah, my understanding is there was some discrepancy of what budgeting group that, um, the auditor's office wanted to use. And so I don't think the preference there was Baker Tilly. I think they have an alternative contract for A I C, but if you're not gonna approve that contract, then we've already got Baker Tilly contract just waiting on.
Very exciting. So that kind of. D S O, new copier? I don't know. In it, so.
Yes.
Better don't.
Yes.
Better service all.
You need to have a paper there that says two different prices. I think. Thanks, man.
Your copier could put completely on that stream.
You should have prices.
Prices. Yeah, just. What the terms can do.
Your price right there. Put back in the middle and fix it.
Three ninety-nine. Oh, you're in the top. So there's significant difference in pricing, but we don't know what he needs.
He did tell me before he left, if you had a problem to hire one, did the laser printer?
Yeah.
Saving money in the long run, but ain't acceptable.
But you know that.
You know, he's going for it.
It's, yeah, that's what he wants, wants a better printer.
Well, yeah. I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase the new M C F L five seven one five D W for five hundred ninety-nine dollars for the mention affairs offer. Take that out of our. We agree. Great. I said it all in favor. Board reports. Now, and down after eight. Actually, two, three, one, six, one of those times. I'm, uh, it's on being placed on the safe passage of the board. I don't know much about it, or when I'll do that, but it's happening, so. I'll have further when that does take place. Oh. Barrett, you want to talk? You want?
Thank you.
Make sure. Oh, uh, in the future, I think after, we'll get to this here in a second, after budgets calm down, um, it was brought that the courthouse hours are still an issue. Sometime in September, we will be having another meeting, I think. Let the elected officials come in here and explain each of their offices, what they feel, uh, appropriate. And we're up again for the handbook, decide whether we stay at forty or thirty-seven point five, state minimums thirty-six for full-time employees, so that topic's come back up. So, um, I think I'll have one, let's do this one here, so sometime in September-ish, October, that'll become, when everything calms back down. Longer another topic. In front of us, we have budgets. Twenty twenty-six budgets. We have that. Who were missing?
And, you know, just so people know where I stand with, you know, potential races and what have you. Uh, you know, I follow the C P I and social security, and right now, those are tracking two point four to two point seven percent. So that's something that that's the world that I live in. And that, that's, that, that will be my vote.
So we're gonna accept the budget. So in the budget, we have commissioner's budget, assessor's budget, the auditor's budget, clerk, the sheriff, circuit court, parks department, prosecutor, soil and water, treasurer, recorder's office. Clerk, the sheriff, circuit court, parks department, prosecutor, soil and water, treasurer, recorder's office, coroner. Purdue extension, health department, nurse managed facility clinic, and the surveyor. Uh, the budgets that we are not in possession of tonight is the animal shelter. Tech building, which is our property, Warfield Bennington, which is ours, port house, which is ours, and the commissioner's budget, which is ours. We're just missing, uh, the animal shelters. So we will accept all the other budgets. In our possession, and we'll turn it over to county council here by next year. If you have anything, benefit. I'll make a motion to accept these budgets, that we're staying. Set, all in favor? Anything else, anybody in the knowledge? Motion to adjourn. Set, all in favor? It's this.